Good evening, everyone. I am happy to report that we have a quorum. There are 164 town meeting members in here this evening, so a quorum requires 148 members be present. Town Clerk Sarah Aruda has let me know that we have 293 total town meeting members, and it is 7:03, and we're going to start the meeting. Would you please all rise and join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Constitution of America. Thank you, everyone. If you would just remain standing for one moment, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the town meeting members we have lost since our last town meeting, the people who have served on our boards and committees, and for other town officials. Thank you very much, please be seated. Before we begin, let's, let me just make a few quick reminders. There's no smoking inside the building or on school property. Please silence your phone, or shut it off, or put it on vibrate, so that we can all stay focused on the business in front of us this evening. Many of you are veterans here, so you'll know how this works, but let me just remind you, here's how the process works. I'm going to read the title of each article, the sponsor will give a short summary, a town meeting member will make a motion, and another will second it by saying "second." Once that's done, I usually first turn to the Finance Committee for their recommendation, and then to the Select Board. After that, I will open the floor for discussion. If you are a town meeting member, and you want your vote to be counted, you need to be sitting down in these three sections in the front. If you are not a town meeting member, I ask that you please sit in the three sections in the back. To avoid confusion, Dartmouth has representative town meeting, not open town meeting, and that means that you must have been elected by your precinct in order to vote, so just being a resident in Dartmouth does not give you a voting right at town meeting. Everyone has received a card tonight with a number on it when you checked in. This helps us quickly determine a quorum, it also helps you spot who's wishing to speak, and to clearly see the votes, so I ask that you use them. To be recognized, raise your card. I'm going to try and prioritize who I call on. I'm going to first ask, call on those who have not spoken yet this evening, and then those who have not spoken on the issue that's being discussed. Please wait for the microphone before speaking. Every time you speak, please state your name and precinct number for the record. Once you've finished, kindly return the microphone. There's no back-and-forth debates, this isn't a courtroom. All questions get directed to me as the moderator, I'll do my best to get you answers. Please remember, we do not challenge or cross-examine other members, officials, or speakers. Please be respectful, we're here to do the town's business even if our approach is different. Speak to ideas, not individuals, avoid using names, refrain from personal attacks, or questioning others' motives. There are no formal speaking limits, but please be clear and concise, and try not to repeat points that have already been made. If you feel it's time to vote, and you don't want to hear any more debate, please raise your hand to be recognized and say "I call the question," or "I move the previous question." This motion requires a two-thirds majority, if it passes, we will end debate and take a vote on the motion that's before us. Calling the question means your fellow members are ready to decide and move on. Any proposed amendments to any of the warrant articles before us must be in writing, and they must be legible. We'll vote by a show of hands, I'll let you know if more than a simple majority is required. If you believe I've miscalled the vote, please stand up right away. If seven members stand to challenge the call, we'll move to a teller count. A teller count cannot be challenged, those results are final. Once I've moved on to the next article and given the floor to its sponsor, the previous vote can no longer be challenged. I've appointed, and the town clerk has sworn in, two individuals to serve as tellers this evening. Also helping us this evening are our friends at Dartmouth Community Television, including Peter Chase, Mike Manese, Daniel Maderas, Jonathan Silva, Jessica Gove, Daniel Ferguson, Kyle Silva, Ava Cabral, and Quincy Antunes. DCTV is once again covering this meeting live, please join me in thanking Peter and the rest of them for their continued support and service. Thanks, Pete. We have 14 articles on the town meeting warrant, I expect thoughtful discussion, and with your help, I believe we can get our work finished tonight, I see no reason why we can't. Let me introduce the individuals seated up here on stage. Immediately to my left is Town Council Anthony Savastano, then we have our town clerk Sarah Haskell-Aruda, we have our new town administrator Cody Hadad, it's his first town meeting with us, so let's see if we can treat him as respectfully as you're doing. I'm sure you'll join me in welcoming him. And then we have the Director of Budget and Finance Gary Carrero. For the Select Board, I'm going to introduce our Chairperson Heidi Silverbrooks. Heidi, would you please introduce the rest of the members of your board, please?
Happy to. To my right, we have Christopher O'Neill, Sean McDonnell, and to my left Stanley Mickelson, and David Tattlebaum.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee, we have our Chairperson Janine Simmons. Janine, would you introduce the members of your committee, please?
Yes, I will. To my immediate left is Brian O'Hare, then we have John Souza and Bill Bowles. To my right, we have our Vice Chair Carrie Parsons, we have Nate Silva, we have Patrick Saunders, and Terry Ham.
Thank you. These are the nine volunteers that spend countless hours reviewing the town's finances on your behalf, and advise town meetings, so thank you to the Finance Committee for your work. Preliminary motions, before we begin the articles, we need to take care of a few preliminary motions for those. I'm going to turn to Attorney Savastano, our Town Council. Mr. Savastano, would you take us through those preliminary motions, please?
Moved that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant in the lawful posting in return of service thereon, and that the moderator is hereby relieved from reading each article in its entirety, and is allowed to refer to them by title and number, and that the moderator is hereby allowed to take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence as she may determine, and that a teller count need not be taken on motions requiring two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths votes, and that the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor of the preliminary motions, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The preliminary motions pass at 7:10. Great, let's get started. Article 1, Article 1, Community Preservation Committee Aiken House Cellar Water Moisture Mitigation Project. Mr. Buddy Baker-Smith, please.
We have one article from the CPC in this town meeting. It's a historic preservation project, the Aiken House, for an amount of $22,800. The Aiken House is a historic building, well, probably one of the oldest, if not the oldest, in Dartmouth. It's a study house, if you will, so it reflects the construction and materials and finishes from its first, when it was built in 1762, on through the different generations who have occupied that house. One of the issues that they have encountered is moisture and high humidity within the building, and after extensive consultation, they have come up with a proposal to basically water, provide a membrane, plastic membrane, actually concrete, on the basement dirt floor, seal the interior of the basement, provide a French drain system to better control moisture in the building, and help control the humidity which will kind of add to the longevity of the finishes and materials in the building. So that's an amount of $22,800. I move that the town meeting approve this article.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
And the Select Board recommendation, please?
4.00.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 1? Are we ready to vote? Thank you, let me get a microphone back there, please?
Thank you. Loriann Miller, Precinct 9. My questions are twofold. Number one, how much have we put into this building? How many thousands of dollars have the town spent? And number two, when this first came before us, there was a, there's supposed to be a plan, and I haven't seen a plan come before us to tell us, how are we using this building? Are we having anything to recruit some of our revenue that we've spent on this building? Are we giving classes there, are we giving tours there? What other plans, and how much have we spent to this date?
Okay, so on the first question, I'm not sure if we can get an, if we have that information. Mr. Baker-Smith has that information.
Yes. So there have been a total of three awards Town Meeting has made to the Aiken House. The first one in 2003, and the total of those awards was one in 2003, one in 2008, and one in 2015, for a total of $645,000.
Thank you. The other question is a little bit off point, but I do see Ms. Gilbert here, and I'm wondering if she would like to speak to it. Would you like to come down, Ms. Gilbert, to the podium? If you prefer, Mike, I can get you one.
Diane Gilbert, President of DHPT, and as Buddy has indicated, we've had three phases of work, and as a result of this, this has been an investment, so to Mrs. Miller's question about how are we going to recoup our investment, that wasn't really the mission. The mission is that this is a study house, and a cultural heritage center, and we've shared many plans with the public. In fact, every time that we've come to CPC, we've also shared our plans for the work, and ultimately where we want to end up, which is as a cultural heritage center and a study house. So yes, we have events there, and we also do house tours, we have archaeological displays, and after meeting with the Select Board last night to discuss the Aiken House, I'm sure they don't want to hear any more from me for a while, so, Mrs. Miller, I'm happy to share with you all of that documentation, because it does exist, and I'm sorry that it might have escaped you, and I guess I should put you on my distribution list. Does that help?
Thank you. Any other questions on Article 1? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 1, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 1 passes at 7:16. Article 2, Appropriation to the Stabilization Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 2 is the appropriation to the town stabilization fund from surplus revenue pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B. The amount of $250,000 represents the contribution of monies maintaining the town at least 10% of the operating revenues, as defined by the town's financial policies. The current balance on the stabilization fund is $13,364,097.08.
Thank you, and I have a motion from Ms. Silverbrooks. Do I have a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation, please?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article 2? Gentlemen in the back.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Noons, Precinct 6, through you to either the Town Administrator or the Finance Director, kind of on this, but also going forward, the, when I was looking at the Department of Revenue website, it looks like we had some $8 million in free cash surplus revenue, that some of which we're appropriating tonight, and I'm just wondering how we got that much, which is a lot.
Mr. Carrero, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mr. Noons, thank you for your question. So typically, we, on average, are certifying around $5 million, $4.5 million in prior year free cash, and that's been the town's average for some, quite some time. Last year, we certified about $6.8 million. This year, as you mentioned, we certified $8 million, and there's some anomalies to that, we're expecting that to go back down. Typically, what we do is, we look at articles that haven't been spent, we rescind those articles, that adds to free cash. For a couple, a couple examples, the Vacta truck last year, which was $632,000 roughly, we had, we went ahead and used Opera money for that, that freed up that money that we used, that's a million, almost a million dollars right there. The Parks Department on a van was another $60,000, and the Mid-Mount truck for the, for the Parks Department, $20,000, along with, as I mentioned, the articles that we closed, Police Department, $121,000, the Chart of Accounts, $80,000, and a couple of other streets, street projects that were in there totaling about $400,000, so that totaled about $648,000. In the aggregate, that put us above what we usually certify, in the tune of almost $1.5 million. We expect that to go back down to our normal level going forward.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Noons? Okay. Anything else? Any further discussion? Down in front, here, please.
I just have one, one question. Curtis Noons, Precinct, Precinct 6. The $250,000, is that just a coincidence, or does that have anything to do with question number eight, article number eight? Just coincidence?
Just a, Mr. Hadad, you want to?
The feasibility study on the roof?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see who we want to answer it. Mr. Hadad, is that you?
Yes, that is the coincidence.
Any further questions on Article 2? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 2, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 2 passes at 7:20. Article 3, Appropriation to the Stabilization Fund for Collective Bargaining and Non-Union Agreements. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 3 funds the Collective Bargaining Stabilization Fund in the amount of $650,000. This reflects the amount of collective bargaining and non-union personnel pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, in preparation for the town's classification and compensation study. The current balance in the collective bargaining account stabilization fund is $400,254.24.
Thank you, and I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, and a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
And Select Board recommendation?
4.00.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 3? I need a microphone here, please.
I was wondering if you can clarify who, what parts of the town are part of this study?
So this is a, so maybe you can better explain what, what this is?
Sure. So, thank you, Madam Moderator. The, this is a class and compensation study which includes a job descriptions. As you know, or may not know, some of, some of the positions in town have very antiquated job positions, uh, job descriptions, excuse me. This includes everything except the schools, police, and every other town department besides the schools. So as an effort to try to remain competitive with other communities, we're looking at revamping job descriptions, and looking at our class and comps for other, in other communities, for liking-kind positions.
Thank you. I think we have a question here, please?
Kevin Murphy, Precinct 8. In regard to this classification study, the comparative towns, last time I remember we did this study, included some pretty fancy towns out of the area, and the reason I was given that those towns were selected were those are the ones that we always used. Who was going to decide what towns we will be comparing for the study? Thank you.
Great question. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, just to clarify, this article is to put aside the money into the stabilization fund. Part of the reason for that is the comping class study, however, we, we are going into a bargaining year, all of our town unions' contracts are up, so we would be doing this regardless. The result, the additional amount of $650,000 certainly has to do with that, but we did hire an independent consultant, and we've relied on them to identify those things. The town is staying out of identifying those, so that is an objective study that is completed by an independent consultant.
Thank you. And I think we have another question here.
I just had a follow-up to my previous?
Could you, could you please give your name and?
Heather Noyes-Fredette.
Thank you.
Precinct 7, sorry. I just had a follow-up to... I just had a follow-up to the reasoning why we wouldn't do all town employees at the same time to get a full picture of where we are for all salaries across all town members, town government.
Mr. Hadad?
Yes. Essentially, it's a policy decision. It's all positions not included in the schools. And the schools have, you know, decided to, they have bargained their own contracts in a way, and they have decided not to go with a comping class study. It may not be necessary. So, it's something that the Select Board, through their policy goals, have identified as necessary for all non-school employees, which they have authority over for the most part.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article Three? Over there, please.
Jerry Fishbein, Precinct 5. Can, can someone give some explanation for the rationale behind the policy decision that would exclude the schools?
Mr. Hadad, or do you want me, do you want someone from the Select Board to answer that?
I can, I believe it, you know, the schools are governed by the school committee. So, that really would be a question for the school committee to identify when and if they feel it's appropriate to conduct a comping class study for their employees.
Right down here, please. Another question.
Diane Brush, Precinct 4. Was the school committee asked if they wanted to participate or not in the study?
Do you know, Mr. Hadad, if the school committee was asked about this?
It is my understanding that they were not. They were already in contract negotiations with their unions.
Okay. Any further questions on Article Three? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Three, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Three passes at 726. Article Four, appropriation to the stabilization fund for long-term capital. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Four funds the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund in the amount of $500,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B. This fund is designed to set aside funds in anticipation of longer-term capital projects that the town determines to be the pri, on a priority basis. The current balance in the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund is $585,877.23.
Thank you. And I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
And the Select, I need a second, don't I? Second, thank you. Select Board recommendation, please?
Four.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Four? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Four, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Four passes at 727. Article Five, appropriation from Water Enterprise retained earnings for fiscal year 2025 deficit. Mr. Uh, Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Five would transfer from retained earnings in the Water Enterprise Fund the sum of $102,823 to fund a FY25 appropriation deficit. Expenses exceeded revenues in fiscal '25, mainly due to the purchase of significant water from the city of New Bedford. This action is being required from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Myself, along with our leadership team, are acutely aware of this concern and are reviewing this going forward, so this does not happen again.
So, I need a motion and a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
And the Select Board recommendation?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article Five? Right here, please.
Kimberly Bancroft, Precinct 7. My question is, why is this the first time Town Meeting is hearing about this issue? And why wasn't Town Meeting asked to allocate retained earnings to cover previous year's deficits?
Mr. Hadad?
Sure, it's a great question. The, we have not had deficits in previous years. This is the first year that we've had a deficit in the retained earnings account. So, we have historically have not had to come forward to Town Meeting. It's a requirement that when we pull from our retained earnings, which are certified as of June 30th of the previous year, we have to have Town Meeting approval to pull from that account to cover the prior deficit.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Five? Are we ready to vote? Right there?
Meg Rogers, Precinct 5. Can anyone share what steps are taking place so that this doesn't happen again in the future?
Sure. Mr. Hadad, can you help us with that?
Absolutely. Myself, along with Gary Carrero, our Finance Director, and Tim Barber, our Director of Public Works, are monitoring the budgets on a regular basis to make sure that our revenues and expenses are equaling out. Ideally, we have a little bit more revenue than we do expenses, so we can build retained earnings, that savings account. We also have a significant number of our wells that are currently down for a number of reasons. We are in the process of getting those back up. And we anticipate prior to fiscal '27, those wells will be back up and operating, at least some of those, which will reduce the amount of water that we have to purchase from the city of New Bedford.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Five? Mr. Silva?
Um, I just, just in the interest of.
I need your name and precinct number, please.
Nathan Silva, Precinct 6. Just in the interest of keeping Town Meeting informed of where we were and where we are now, I think it was four or five years ago, we had about $2 million of retained earnings left. And then after this reallocation of retained earnings to cover the deficit, we'll be down to about $150,000. So, it's a significant problem. I'm glad to hear that the Town Administration has their eyes on it and is actively managing the situation. But it's something that is concerning and that we should certainly keep an eye on going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Five? On the aisle there, please? Could you please wait for a microphone, so you can, we can hear you and all the TV viewing audience can hear you?
Joseph O'Connell, Precinct 9.
Thank you.
Question on the funding. Are we still buying water from New Bedford? And is this primarily the reason for the deficit?
Mr. Hadad?
Yes, that would be accurate. And we are purchasing water from the city of New Bedford when our wells aren't able to produce enough.
Is there a schedule relative to expectations over the next three years as to what our requirements are going to be for water relative to what it's going to cost us?
We anticipate that a number of our wells that are currently down will be back operational by the end of this fiscal year, which will help us to meet the demand of the water in town. We've historically purchased water from the city of New Bedford, just not to this extent.
Question. What do we pay?
That would be a question for our Director of Public Works. I do not have the breakdown.
Sure. Mr. Barber, I don't know if you have that information? Yep. So, Mr. Barber's going to come on down in a moment to help with that? Yes.
A point of clarification. Are you asking the total amount we paid last year or the amount per unit that we're paying in the city of New Bedford? Okay.
Okay. I think he's looking for some sort of a pricing per gallon or pricing per unit that we purchase from the city of New Bedford.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Just a quick, just a quick, also FYI. Through the efforts of Selectman Chris, sorry, Chris O'Neil. Discussion has begun with Representative Rodrick's, Senator Rodrick. Senator Rodrick's, old school, sorry. With extending the line that currently exists in Route 6 in Westport. And that's water from Fall River. We're looking to also see if we can tap into that line into Dartmouth, so that Fall River would be the one selling us water, probably cheaper than New Bedford, because Fall River is looking for customers to sell water to. So, right now, that's another avenue that the town is looking at, so.
Mr. Barber, do you want to come on down?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Tim Barber, Director of Public Works. We currently pay $6.34 per 100 cubic feet of water.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further, yes. Well, I'm going to start here, and then I will be back there. So, right there, please.
Hi, Jeannie Tripp, Precinct 7. Couple of years ago, we had this discussion about all the wells that were down. And at that time, I remember a really long discussion with people from North Dartmouth. What I don't understand is that back then, the expectation was that these wells would be back online already, and we're now three years later. So, I'm curious as to what the delays are. Is it a contract problem, or it just doesn't make sense?
So, I'm not, let's see if we can get you, I'm not sure they're the same wells. So, let's see if we can get you an answer to your question, or if they're different wells. Mr. Barber, do you, can you help us with that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You are correct. So, two years ago, we were in a, in a reconstruction of the Violetta Wells. At that time, those wells were down. And during that time, in 2020, there was a, a large rainstorm, which brought runoff and intrusion into the wells, which we had a bacteria hit. So, in order to get those wells back online, we are currently installing what's called a forelog system to make sure that the water has enough time to contact the treatment chemicals throughout the, the forelog system before it goes out to the public. So, the groundwater rule requires us to do that through our Water Management Act. And we are currently in, in the process of constructing that, along with other water quality infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Yenna, down front, please.
Hi, Tom Yenna, Precinct 1. I've been studying water all my life. I keep telling Dartmouth, we ain't doing it right. We've got one city on one side of us, another city on the other side of us. They take our water and store it in Dartmouth. They have the reservoirs. A lot of it is in Dartmouth. We run short. We buy it from them. We're buying our own damn water. What I'm trying to promote, what I'm trying to say, what long-range planning is going to do for us. Let's make our own reservoir. There's a good spot for it. I know every damn piece of water in this whole place, where it comes from, where it goes. And for years ago, Dartmouth didn't have enough brains. 99-year lease for dollars for City of Fall River. They needed it. There was well, there was factories and stuff. We didn't need the water. Now, we need the water. We're in trouble. The best thing to do, instead of pumping it and have problems with your pump, pumping it out of the ground, let Mother Nature take care of us. Let rain and land help. Guess what? Hold the water. City of Providence has the best water in New England, comes from Sitewatt. You know how they purify it? They blow it up in the air. Rain and sun, it takes care of most of the water. Why can't we do something like that? I think the problem is, nobody wants to spend money. They want to fix something, but they don't want to spend the money. So, I hope you hear it again. They asked me to do some more research. I found a good location. And the way they generally do reservoirs, it's the way the, the earth is built. Like a bowl. Fill it up. And some of that places has already been cleaned out. Old cranberry bogs. That holds water. It's like a sponge. It's there. Why do we have to spend a lot of money ridiculously? All we need to do is put a group of people together, do some more studies, come with the money, and come to you people. And then they, like the building a new school over here or a library over there, this is for the whole town. Everybody in there can use water. Let's take care of it the best way we can. And I'd like to come back and report back to you whatever I can and see what you've got to say. And if you want me to quit, tell me go to hell. But I'm going to stick with it for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Yenna. Did I have someone else who wants to speak on Article Five? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Talk about a tough act to follow, Tom. Uh, I want to assure Tom and Town Meeting that our long-range planning is, this is his, his solution and many others were part of the package of what we're going to do going down the road, where we get our water, where we buy our water, and possibly the science of actually talking about, doing what Tom's talking about. This is, this is a serious issue, not only where, the quantity of water we need, but also the quality of water as well. That is part of our long-range plan. And we will make another report in the spring about what we're going with it. We're taking one step at a time. And I want to commend, once again, our Long Range Planning Committee, because this is part of the package. We promise you we'll deliver and we'll give you a credible evidence as to what we think we should be doing. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Tattelbaum. Any further discussion on Article Five? Are we ready to, on the, on the aisle, please?
Joseph O'Connell, Precinct 9. Just a point of clarification. How many wells does Dartmouth have?
Mr. Barber, can you give us a ballpark?
About 13.
13?
13.
Yes. Do you have a follow-up question, sir? Wait, we can't hear his question. Mr.?
Of the 13, how many are downed, Tim?
Currently, we have two at the Peneli, well, yeah, two at the Peneli site. Sorry, three at the Peneli site. And our, one of our F wells and one of our E wells, due to capacity in the pipe and aeration, which Mr. Yenna was, was discussing, aeration. So, we, what part of our master plan, our 10-year capital plan, is to add additional aeration at one of our treatment facilities and increase the diameter of our pipes so we can, so we can meet the demands of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any further discussion on Article Five? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Five, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Five passes at 7:40 PM. Article Six, appropriation from Solid Waste Enterprise retained earnings for fiscal year 2025 deficit. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is the same exact approach as the previous article. We're requesting that Town Meeting approve transfer from retained earnings in the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund in the amount of $4,306 to fund a prior year deficit in fiscal '25. This is primarily due to an increase in disposal costs, although this is much smaller than the prior article.
Thank you very much. And I have a motion?
May.
And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation, please?
4.00.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Six? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Six, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Six passes at 7:41. Article Seven, Acceptance of Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding of Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Plan. What I'm going to do on this one is I'm going to, um... Well, Mr. Carrero, do you want, you want to summarize it first? Or you want, you want, okay. Mr. Carrero, go ahead with the summary, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Seven funds the annual CPC capital planning committee's requests through the departments. Article Seven includes the items that the CPC has voted on through departmental requests and is now being recommended to be funded from various funding sources. It's printed in the warrant totaling $4,686,943.
Thank you. And I have a motion?
Motion, may.
And a second? I heard my second. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
Thank you. And Select Board recommendation?
Recommends 4.00.
Okay. Okay. So, what I'm going to do, and you've seen this procedure before, is I'm going to go through and read the line items and the totals. And if you have a question on something, I'm going to ask you to call a hold, and we'll come back and clear the questions, okay? I know I already have one hold. So, here we go. Dartmouth Public Schools, security upgrades, $285,000. Flooring replacement project, ACBM, $100,000. Technology and hardware, $200,000. Playground improvements, various schools, $100,000, for a total of $685,000. Dartmouth Police Department, four marked cruisers replacement, $296,718. Eighty firearms, $67,200, for a total, okay, for a total of $363,918. DPW Administration Division, DPW Asset Management Program, $100,000. Crossroad Phase 2 design, $150,000. Efficiency study, $60,000. Gap Grant Matching Fun, Match Funding, $40,000, for a total of $350,000. DPW Highway Division, Freightliner, $28,000. GVW Plow Truck Replacement, $196,000. $34,400 GVW Dump Truck with Plow and Sander Replacement, $270,000, for a total of $466,000. The next page, DPW Engineering Division Pickup Truck, $45,000, for a total of $45,000. DPW Construction, Freightliner, $25,000. GVW Dump Truck with Plow Replacement, $196,000, for a total of $196,000. Parks and Recreation, Community Park Playground Resurfacing, $421,805. Allen Street Garage Repairs, $400,000. Round Hill Beach Automatic Gate, $14,220, for a total of $836,025. General Government Council on Aging Kitchen Remodel, $400,000. Two administrative SUV Replacements, $75,000, for a total of $475,000. SOWR Enterprise Fund, Preliminary Treatment Bar Screen and Grit Chamber Rebuild, $225,000. Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrade Evaluation, $500,000, for a total of $725,000. DPW Solid Waste Enterprise, MAC Dual Arm 35CY Recycling Truck Replacement, $540,000. Hold, is that a hold? Yes, okay. For a total of $540,000. Dartmouth Community Television, DCTV Building Improvements, $5,000, for a total of $5,000. So, let's go back and start to clear the holds. There was a hold, I believe, on Dartmouth Police Department Firearms. Who called the hold, please? May I please have a microphone down here for Mr. Toomey? I'll make sure we've got them all cleared. Thank you.
Joe Toomey, Precinct 5. I remember vaguely that five, six years ago, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we bought some Glock sidearms for policemen. I realized that they liked to have modern equipment. I'm all for supporting the policeman in whatever tools they need for their job. But how many policemen do we have? And is this eighty a correct number? And how did you arrive at eighty? Eighty firearms sound like a lot to me. And I'm just wondering, what happened to the old ones? How do we dispose of them? Do we wholesale them, or whatever? And they don't wear out after ten or twenty years. So, how come we need that many right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Does the chief want to come down and speak to us? Please?
Good evening. Brian Leveque, Chief of Police. Let me know if I missed any of the, there was a bunch of questions packed in there. So, the reason we're looking to change, swap out the firearms is, as you stated, maintaining modern equipment. What departments are switching to, not only the caliber change from forty-five to nine-millimeter has become very common, but the bigger change is the optics on the firearms allows officers to more accurately aim the weapons. It allows the target focus, so we can maintain a better sight picture on the person versus on the sights on the guns. So, we're talking about an optic like we have on our rifles now, basically a red dot is commonly what they refer to it as. That's the main issue for the upgrade on the firearms. They're not, not that they're worn out necessarily, although we don't keep them usually for twenty years. That would be a little on the long side. The other thing is, the number, how do we establish eighty? We're authorized for seventy-four officers. We also have special police officers. That number varies. Right now, it's around, I believe, five or so. So, it's to replace the existing firearms is how we get that, that number. The firearms we have now would be traded in, and that credit was applied towards the amount we're asking for. So, that is built into the current amount you see that we're requesting.
Thank you. Do we have another, any other questions on this? Right there, please.
Gretchen Bakersmith, Precinct 8. Eighty firearms divided by six thousand, sixty-seven thousand is eight hundred and forty apiece, and that's the trade-in. So, my question is, I'm appalled at that amount of money. But I'm appalled by a lot of the firearms. And I need to know, how does a police department make decisions on what kind of training they do for nonviolent conflict resolution? How do you train for not immediately firing? How do you come up with that kind of decision on what it is that you need? Is there a citizens' board? Is there, like, how do you, how do you decide this, short of thinking about what happens in the rest of the world that doesn't happen here? Or it doesn't happen so many times that we need that many?
So, a lot of that question strayed pretty far from, from where we are. But I'm going to give the chief a chance to answer, I guess, how do you make the decision on what you buy for firearms?
Sure. So, just, just to clarify, too, the, the number up there, the amount we're requesting, it's for the firearm itself. Also, the optic, which is a piece of electronics, it's a bit pricey. It requires a new holster to hold the different firearm, as well as the flashlight that goes on. So, it's a complete package, which I think makes the number a lot more reasonable when you look at what we are getting for it. The other question is, obviously, we are trained in de-escalation. We're heavily regulated. The post has been established in Massachusetts as part of the Police Reform Act, requiring that we receive a certain amount of training, not only in the academy, but annually. The officers also carry tasers as, as an alternative to firearms. But we still do live in a day and age where firearms are a necessity. And I want to make sure that officers have the best available equipment to allow them to do their job safely and protect the public.
Thank you. Is it on this line item? Okay. On the, on the aisle there, please?
Thank you. Erin Sousa, Precinct 7. I'm curious how long you anticipate this new batch of tools for the force being in use? And how long can we anticipate seeing, you know, this type of replacement, if there is a life cycle we should be mindful of, so that we can anticipate the need going forward? Thank you.
Chief Leveque?
Sure. So, on average, it would be around ten years. And when we start seeing failures, obviously, we train with the weapons at least twice a year. When we start seeing failures with the firearms, when we start looking to replace them. Or if there's some type of improvement in technology that would warrant, that's what this situation is basically revolves around. We do anticipate some savings going forward as well. The ammunition is about almost forty percent less expensive than what we currently have as well.
Thank you. Do you have a question over here, please?
Yes, thank you. Roseanne O'Connell, Precinct 9. So, it sounds as though the technology you're replacing what is existing with a firepower that has more technology. So, it begs the question, is there more crime in Dartmouth? And how do we address crime in Dartmouth besides firearms?
Okay. We're going further afield. So, this is a capital improvement plan. I want to stick to the capital improvement plan. It's, if you have some of these questions, I'm sure the chief will make himself available to answer them. But we're sticking, do we have specific questions around the firearms? What I'm hearing him say is, he's asked for this money, there's a technology improvement, that's why he's asking them for this funding, or why the police department is asking for this funding. And it's to buy enough firearms to cover all of the officers. On the aisle here, please?
Thank you. Margaret Sweet, Precinct 9. And I think that our police officers have to be equally armed, as well as the crooks. So, they need firearms that can defend all of us in this town. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the, right down front, please?
Arthur Gerard, Precinct 2. We keep hearing in the news, all these mass shootings. We don't have that in Dartmouth. I hope we never will. But I want them to have the best tools. If that ever happens, I want our police with the best tools, so we can save some lives, whether it's a school or wherever it happens. So, I strongly support this, and I hope everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before I clear the hold on this? Well, I need to finish clearing my holds. So, anything else on this line item before we move on, please? Okay, great. Let's move on to the next line item, which is Council on Aging Kitchen Remodel. Who called the hold? Right here, please.
Gilbord, just Precinct 4. I'm kind of ignorant when it comes to kitchens, but $400,000 for a remodel? Are we putting in a whole new kitchen, or are we just fixing the one that's there?
Let me see if I can get you an answer to that question. Do you want to take that, Mr. Haddad? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a total reconstruction of the kitchen, which includes the ancillary system, all appliances, all electrical, HVAC. The whole, whole kitchen will be completely redone.
Thank you. Any further questions on that hold? I'm clearing that hold, then. Okay. The next one was about the MAC Dual Arm 35CY Recycling Truck Replacement. Who called that hold, please? Was there a DPW hold? Okay. Hearing, none? Okay. Mr. Silva, you had a question that you wanted to ask?
Nathan Silva, Precinct 6. Not so much a question. I just wanted, again, in the interest of keeping Town Meeting informed of several things, I just wanted to give some further information. I honestly struggled on how I was going to vote for, for this article. Ultimately, I decided it was better to do something than do nothing. But I just wanted to clue you in on my thought process and some of the concerns that I have. My goal is to keep Town Meeting informed. I think that's our job here, is to make sure that Town Meeting has the information it needs to make an informed vote. So, I just want to give you some background information. If this warrant gets passed as-is, the town will retain approximately $3.1 million in free cash. This is sort of a departure of what we've done in years past. Normally, we allocate all of our funds either to projects through capital spending, or to stabilization accounts. So, we'll have about $3.1 million remaining. Now, our town policy, financial policies are to keep 2.5% to 5% of our free cash, 2.5% to 5% of our operating revenues as free cash. Historically, we haven't done that. We haven't followed that policy, but we are. If this warrant gets passed as-is, I think it's a good practice to keep some free cash on hand. But it is a departure with how we've done things in the past. On top of that, we also have our stabilization accounts. We have about $13 million total in stabilization accounts. Our financial policy is to keep 10% of our operating revenues in stabilization funds. We're currently carrying about 12%, which is about $2 million more than our financial policy minimum. So, some context, I think, is important to keep in mind. That's great for the bonding agencies, right? They like to see that we have savings to be able to fund rainy day-type events. But that's the context of what, what we have for cash. So, with that in mind, I want to talk a little bit about this Article 7. And when I, what I'm going to share is only as it relates to our surplus revenue expenditures. I have some questions on our enterprise fund expenditures, but I haven't had enough time to really research that. I plan to do that for the Spring Town Meeting. But there's, pretty much what I'm sharing is as it relates to our general, general fund surplus revenue expenditures. And what concerns me is that, as we spoke about in the springtime, I believe we have a revenue problem in town. Our revenues are not keeping pace with, with the needs of our town, both operationally, and we're seeing it now in capital. We're not able to fully fund all of the requests that were made for capital expenditures by our various departments. And that's a problem, right? And our, our free cash is, as Gary said earlier today, it's generated by what's left over at the end of the year, but also, you know, closing previous articles and whatnot. One of the things I want you to take note of is that there's no road projects on this fall's capital requests, which, if any of us have driven around town, we know there's no shortage of roads that need a little bit of help. But there is no road projects being requested this year. The reason for that is because we weren't able to fully spend previous money that was allocated. So, the town's going to focus on spending the money that's already been allocated for roads, before asking for more money for, for additional road projects. So, in researching this article, I wanted to know what was the totality of the request, right? What we see here on our warrant is only what was recommended, right? We don't know, based on what's been provided to us, everything that was requested. And I think that's important context for us to really understand as a community and as Town Meeting members. So, Gary gave me the full, the full list, and I was able to whittle that down. And there's about, there was about 25 non-road general fund requests that were made, which totaled about $5.6 million. Also excluded, excluded from that is the Memorial Stadium request, which is being tracked under long-term capital, so I didn't think it was necessary to talk about it here. But in your packets, you see all of the articles that are being, all of the projects that are being recommended. But what you don't have is what wasn't able to be, what requests were not able to be fulfilled. So, again, excluding the stadium, excluding road projects, and excluding enterprise fund requests, these are the projects that did not make the cut. Number one was the DPW Preserve Pump Station Upgrades for $400,000. Number two was another DPW for the CAT 93 Loader. Number three was a schools project, and it's the, the balance of the asbestos flooring replacement. They had requested $200,000, $100,000, made it into the article. There's a $100,000 balance to, to finish that job. Number four was also the schools for playground improvements. Again, they had requested, I think, $250,000. $100,000 is being allocated in this article, which leaves a $150,000 balance remaining to complete that project. Number five is also the schools for the track reconstruction for $567,000. Number six is also the schools for HVAC upgrades for $300,000. Number seven is also the schools for the school bus replacement for $150,000. And then the last one is the general government munis ERP upgrades for $151,029. The total of these are just north of $2 million. And I think it's important to note that none of these projects that didn't get funded in this article are things that are going to go away, right? These must get done at some point in the future, and it's only going to cost us more money to do them later than to do them now. Just given current inflation rates, we can reasonably expect that these $2 million worth of projects will cost about $80,000 more next year than they would be to do it this year. It's important to note that our AAA bond rating, our interest rates, will be less than the forecasted construction escalation, escalation rate. So, by all accounts, it is literally costing us more to kick this can down the road than to either do it now with free cash, or borrow and get it done now. So, really, there's three options that we can really consider, and I don't think we're going to solve it here today. But I would highly encourage that these considerations be made between now and the Spring Town Meeting. Number one, we can use some of that $3.1 million of free cash that we have left over. It would be contrary to our financial policies, but it would be consistent with, with past practice that we've done in years past. Number two, we could do a conventional borrowing. However, that would be an impact on our operational budget, right? It would be an increase to our debt service line item, and potentially cause issues with funding other departments. And then number three, an idea that was kicked around at the last FinCon meeting, was possibly to do a debt exclusion to bundle up a number of these projects that we've been kicking down the road for a number of years now. Again, that would require a town, a town-wide vote. And the downside of that is, we've got a lot of needs that will have to be going to town-wide votes soon, whether it's new schools, wastewater treatment plant, et cetera. And we've got to be careful not to have, you know, death by a thousand cuts, and fatigue the voters on what, what we need. So, I don't have a good solution, but I just want, again, in the interest of keeping this body, our legislative body of town, informed, I think it's important for us to understand the context, and that we have a revenue problem that we have to acknowledge and, and fix. Because otherwise, we're going to continue to kick the can down the road, and we're going to have more problems in the future. So, just wanted to share that, and sorry for being long.
Thank you. So, I think we have cleared the holds, and we are ready to vote? Do you have a follow-up question? Is it? Is it?
Heather Noyes-Fredette, Precinct 7. I was just wondering if we could make available that meeting where this is all decided, so that we can be informed as a town body of how the discussions went? Just curious how things got taken off or kept on? So is there a way to make that?
So is the?
Because I don't think it's recorded at this point.
Is it currently recorded?
No, it isn't.
Can you turn your mic, Mr.?
Currently, it isn't, but we've discussed that going forward, we're going to have those meetings discussed, recorded, excuse me, so that you can actually see what was deleted and added.
Okay. Are we ready to vote then? Okay. All in favor of Article 7, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 7 passes at 8:04. Article 8, appropriation for Dartmouth High School roof feasibility study. Dr. Sabra McGuire, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. June Sabra McGuire, I'm the superintendent of schools here in Dartmouth. And Article 8 represents an appropriation for the Dartmouth High School roof feasibility study. This feasibility study would cost approximately $250,000. It's important to note that this motion must be read in its entirety and recorded in the minutes that way, and if not, it will, it may not be eligible for MSBA reimbursement. So what this article would do, it would fund a feasibility study if the Massachusetts School Building Authority accepts our project for this round of funding. And what this would allow is that the MSBA, short for Massachusetts School Business Authority, would, they would, that would make the town eligible for about 50% of the reimbursement of the roof. And so we are actually up for consideration at the MSBA's October 29th board meeting, so that's coming up very shortly. We're definitely hopeful, but at the same time, we recognize that there is great need across the state, and we're hopeful that we rise to the top. But if not, if we're not accepted in this round, we would be considered in the next cycle. And so we ask that the town move forward with this appropriation.
Okay. So to make sure that we comply and that we're eligible, I'm going to read this motion in its entirety, which is not what I normally do, but I'm going to do that for this particular article. That the town of Dartmouth appropriate the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a Dartmouth High School roof replacement feasibility study at 555 Bakersville Road, Dartmouth 02748, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which Town of Dartmouth may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Dartmouth School Committee. The Town of Dartmouth acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is not an entitlement, discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the Town of Dartmouth incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the Town of Dartmouth. And I'm guessing that Mrs. Silverbrooks is moving that for me? And I have a second. Thank you. Any, sorry, Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends this Article 7.0.
Thank you. And the Select Board recommendation, please?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article 8? Down here, please.
Hi, Tom Yenna again. A way I understand, it's a good thing we've got lawyers, so I can, I'm going to make it my way. Right or wrong, yes or no? This looks crazy to me. We want to get somebody in here to tell us what's wrong with the roof and what's wrong with the windows? It's going to cost us a quarter of a million dollars? God almighty! That's crazy money.
So, Mr. Yenna, I believe this is a requirement of having the costs reimbursed from the state. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
So that's why, it's one of the requirements for us to be eligible for state reimbursement when we go to build the school.
So, in other words, this article is also trying to get some money from the state to help us, right?
That is correct.
Okay. How long ago was this building built, and how much, what was it, 20-some years, I think, now? Is the building paid for? Did the roof have any guarantee on it?
So maybe we can find you an answer to the question of the age of the roof, Mr. Carrero?
Excuse me, I think the building is close to 25 years old, and that was just paid off, I believe, last fiscal year. And so, as you know, the roof and warranties, to a certain point, are not, the town can't go after that.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Yenna? Do you have a follow-up question?
Our buildings in this town can be a library, anything. It generally goes for somebody to give us money. So you go for grants, funds, or something. And then, what are we going to do? Everything is money. And we wind up building something, and before you know it, we're in trouble with it. It ain't built right, something's wrong with it, and here we go, more money, more money, more money. Why can't we dodge some of these problems that the town had and get somebody new and we know local, some good workers, labor, people that are going to do the work, not tell us what to do and don't do a damn thing? Let's talk to the people. Give us some money, give us some ideas of what it's going to cost. We might know the people. It's like buying a good thing. A good car might last you. You buy a piece of junk, and it ain't going to last you. The building is only going to last that long. It's crazy what we're doing lately. We're looking at money to grab money and not build right. I think we ought to rethink some of these programs we got old on.
Thank you, Mr. Yenna. Any further discussion on Article 6? Article 8, sorry. Article 8. In the back there, please. I'll be right back for you, Mr. Toomey.
Kevin Murphy, Precinct 8. Not fully understanding the process. I assume this will be going out to an RFP, and I'm just wondering why a $250,000 number is being presented and not, say, $100,000? If I was going to answer an RFP and knew there was $250,000 available, that would certainly affect the amount of money that I was going to bid on for the project. So where did that $250,000 estimate come from?
So this actually wouldn't go out as an RFP. The MSBA actually has a core team, a core group that they rely on to come out and do the feasibility study. So this wouldn't be a situation where this would go out as an RFP.
And the number, could you help us understand how the $250,000 was arrived at?
So that is the recommendation from the MSBA.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? Mr. Toomey, did you have a question down here, please? Thank you.
Joe Toomey, Precinct 5. Does DPW or somebody who's involved with school construction know how much approximately it would cost to build the project if we had to do it ourselves? And if this $250,000 is a requirement for us to get a grant, I understand that that grant's a nice thing to get, but it's a very good possibility we would not get it, and we would have to do it for two or three times. If that grant money only represents 50% of the total cost of the project for the building, we're still needing to spend money on the other 50% by ourselves. And if the $250,000 is not representing much more or much less than the 50% of the project, I would like to see the $250,000 go into the project directly and not take a chance on the MSRB. But I understand that grants are something that you should go for if you can, but if we're only going to get 50% of the project, that still puts us on the other 50.
Let me see if Dr. Sabra McGuire can give us a sense of what you think the total, how does this compare to the total cost of the project, if you have that information?
I do. So the total cost of the project is estimated at approximately $6 million. And so there are roofs that are being replaced all over the state right now, at some high schools, and you can see some of the local articles. And this, actually Norton, I think, was their high school, is going through a replacement process, and it's actually more than that. But we're estimating that the roof at Dartmouth High School would cost about $6 million.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8? Mrs. Bancroft?
Thanks, Gloria Bancroft, Precinct 1. Just for clarification, why was what you read different than the article language?
I'm sorry, than?
Than what's written in?
The reason is because I believe that the article that's in the warrant contemplated borrowing, and it needed to be changed because they're not borrowing for the, they're not doing borrowing for this, and it needs to be read in a very specific way, otherwise we don't qualify for the grant. So it was modified because they won't be borrowing. Am I correct, or, yeah?
So what we're voting on is the language you read, or what's in the article?
The language that I read is what you're voting on, and the difference, my understanding is the difference is that we're not borrowing for it. But Mr. Carrera or Mr. Hadad can jump in if I am mistaken or have anything to add.
So MSBA, I think, Madam Moderator, MSBA has strict guidelines on if, in fact, we were to go full-fledged with this project, if we were to be awarded the $6 million, and the compliment for the town would be 50%, typically for a town like Dartmouth. It is required that Town Meeting take a vote on the specific language so that we can move forward with the $250,000.
You have a follow-up, Mrs. Bancroft?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that what we do tonight doesn't impede the process, because we just did not receive the language that you read to us.
Right. It was, it was, there was some discussion with the MSBA as to the correct language, and what was printed when the warrant went out was not the language they wanted, and so we've redone the language, and that's what I've read. But thank you for following, for asking that. Any further discussion on Article 8? Gentleman over here.
Good evening. Bob Feinberg, Precinct 3. Could you explain to us exactly what are we going to get for this feasibility study? What are they going to do and perform for us?
I can give you an overview. I don't know exactly, but I can certainly give you an overview. So what's happened thus far is the school district initiated this process. What we did is we submitted, and the school committee voted on this, a statement of interest to the MSBA. We've worked with them several times. Mr. Kylie and his team have done, you know, tremendous work in working with the folks that represent the MSBA, and really, I think, just allowing Dartmouth to be a contender here, because there are 90 proposals right now, and so we really want to position ourselves in a way that makes us attractive to the MSBA. So there is an owner's, there's a project manager, the district does work with MSBA, with the project manager to oversee the entire process. There is a designer, an architect or an engineer who comes in and leads the study and performs the physical assessment of the school building's roof. The district does, along with the MSBA and the school building committee, because there would be a school building committee formed, along with the school committee, to include various stakeholders, to participate in the process, and make decisions moving forward. And so we partner with the MSBA and the contractors that come in, the project managers, over time throughout the process, before we move forward with the actual project.
Do you have a follow-up question? Do you have a follow-up question? Okay. Go ahead.
So in other words, they're going to do an evaluation of the existing structure of the roof?
Sure. Mr. Tattelbaum, would you like to add to this discussion?
This process is no different than we're going to be facing in a few years when it comes to a new school. This is a $250,000 process that the state demands. They have dozens and dozens of schools that they're looking at right now, and if we're lucky enough to spend $250,000, it'll need a $3 million reimbursement from the state. I'm rounding off the numbers. This is a critical thing for us to do now, because if we don't do it now, we won't be in that, we'll have to be removed from the consideration in a couple of weeks.
I do understand that.
Okay. This is, the numbers they require from us, we don't have a choice. This is it.
I understand that, but the $250,000 for the evaluation of a roof, this was my career. It is outrageous, and I realize we have no choice, really, but to do it, but it's outrageous amount of money.
Thank you. Did you have something else to add, Mr. Tattelbaum, so we can? Thank you. Your mic's not on, sir.
Sorry. That, if they say yes on a project, it's because they think it's important enough. If they don't, they move to a different school. Period. And we just give the money, they do an evaluation. It's no different than we look at a school to replace it or not. The roof is the same way. This is a critical thing for us to do now.
Thank you. I have another question in the back here, please.
Loriann Miller, Precinct 9. I am in favor of the article, but do we have to vote on an amendment, because what you read and what is in the packet is totally, is different wording?
I understand. The warrant is designed to be, is to provide notice of what is coming before Town Meeting. The language does not need to be exactly the same. It's similar enough that, and there's no change in it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't get thrown out down the road. Thank you.
I understand. I appreciate you asking the question. Mr. Silva?
Just a couple of things. So my background, I'm a construction professional. This is what I do for a living. And I, you know, I think what's important for us to understand as a community is that this building, which is our newest school building, is middle-aged right now. Our typical roof warranties are 20 years on a commercial-grade roof. So this roof has exceeded its warranty period and then some, and we've strung it along over the past few years by doing, I think there was a reserve transfer to patch holes. We have a leaking roof, right? It needs to be fixed. If you go in the library, if you go throughout the building, you'll see stained ceiling tiles. There's a story of a ceiling tile that came down in the nurse's office because it was wet, right? We need to fix our roof to maintain our buildings so that it lasts longer, right? And the longer we let these things go, a leaky roof doesn't get better with time, right? And it causes more damage over time, because now you're dealing with rust, you're dealing with insulation that's getting wet, infiltration into our HVAC systems. It's a big problem if we don't fix it soon. And again, what I was saying before, if we kick the can down the road, this $6 million is going to grow at a rate of about 4.5% to 5% per year. So the sooner we can do it, the better off we're going to be, and the more economical it's going to be for us to fix it now.
You should like, okay. So I have a move the question in front of me. All in favor of moving the question, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The motion to move the question passes, so we're taking a vote on Article 8. All in favor of Article 8, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 8 passes at 8:22 PM. Article 9, Charter Amendment, Board of Public Works Membership. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article would effectively change the existing three-member Board of Public Works to make it a five-member board. I'm sure all Town Meeting members acutely follow Select Board meetings, so you're likely aware that the Select Board has reviewed all of the three-member boards in town, and this is the one that they decided to move forward with for a number of reasons to make it a five-member board.
Am I correct that the Board of Public Works is also in favor of this?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. I have a motion?
Motion made.
Thanks. And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend this Article 7.0.
And Select Board recommendation, please?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article 9? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 9, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 9 passes at 8:23 PM. Article 10, Charter Amendment, Section 6-5 Rules and Regulations. Mr. Hadad, this is also a 2/3 vote. Mr. Hadad?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. This would amend Section 6-5 Rules and Regulations in the Town of Dartmouth Charter. Effectively, what this does is, right now, if any Town Agency Effectively, what this does is right now, if any town agency wants to amend rules or regulations, there is a 10-day posting requirement before the town clerk, and then that rule or regulation can be effective. The select board has received feedback from the community, which is what drove this article. This article effectively requires a 90-day posting period for rule and regulation changes, and those would become effective on January 1st or July 1st rather than sporadically throughout the year. The article also allows for, if there's a mid-year change that is necessary for whatever reason, a public hearing before the select board could be held, and then that change could occur during the mid-year rather than June, July 1st or January 1st.
Thank you. Want to have a motion, Mrs. Silva? Thank you. And second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted 7.0 to recommend.
And the Select Board Recommendation?
4.00.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Ten? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Ten, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Ten passes at 8:25. Article Eleven, General Bylaw Amendment, Chapter Nine, Dartmouth Council on Aging. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This would be an amendment to Chapter Nine of the Town's general bylaws, the Dartmouth Council on Aging. This was directly developed with the Council on Aging Board and the Council on Aging Staff. Effectively, this does a few things. It updates language. To be clear, this is an advisory board. If you go to page nine of the warrant, Section B basically requires that the group be composed of a majority of persons 55 or older. It also allows the select board to appoint honorary advisory members, and it also allows the select board to appoint non-voting associate members.
Thank you. Want to have a motion?
Motion made.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend this Article 7.0.
Select Board Recommendation?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article Eleven? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Eleven passes at 8:26. Article Twelve. Article Twelve is... Personnel Bylaw Amendment New Position. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is essentially what we would call a housekeeping article. This creates the Substance Use Program Coordinator position and adds this to our personnel bylaw. It's a grade-seven position. Our internal team used our current compensation plan to grade the position effectively. This position has been hired effective July 1 and is being funded by the opioid settlement funds.
Great, and I have a motion from?
Motion made.
Second. And second? Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend 7.0.
And the Select Board Recommendation, please?
4.00.
Any discussion on Article Twelve? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Twelve passes at 8:27. Article Thirteen, Appropriation from CDBG Program Income Revolving Fund for Community Development Activities. Mr. Hadad?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a transfer in the amount of $100,000 from Community Development Block Grant Program Income Revolving Fund. The current balance in that account is $176,101. Town meeting has done this historically a number of times. Most recently, in October of 2021, it was a $60,000 transfer. The town used to take part in this program, the CDBG program. It ended in roughly 2010 and was replaced with a Community Preservation Act-funded program. Through the years, as we close things out, we do get program income, hence that $176,000. This moves it from that account essentially to an account that allows us to use it for community development activities. We've historically used it for grant matches, grant technical assistance, project management software, and other community development-related activities.
Thank you. Want to have a motion?
Okay.
And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend 7.0.
And Select Board?
Recommend 4.00.
Any discussion on Article Thirteen? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Thirteen passes at 8:28. Article Fourteen, Increase of Elderly Tax Exemption. Mr. Carrero?
Madam Moderator, through you, I'd invite Mr. Curtis Nunes to the podium.
Sure.
Member of Board of Assessors to explain the article.
Mr. Nunes, would you like to talk about this?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is something we've been working on for a couple of years. For the past 45 years or so, these numbers have never changed, what the veterans get for exemptions and the elderly. Six months ago at the town meeting, we approved the elderly, they're all getting double what they were for the first time in over 40 years, so this just helps us do the same thing for the elderly. Currently, there's 90 people in town that qualify for this. I believe there's more. It's one of the reasons we want to spread the word, tell your friends. Basically, you've got to be 70 years old to qualify. You've got to live in Massachusetts for 10 years, not Dartmouth. You've just got to be a Massachusetts, got to be a domicile, you know, your main residence for 10 years. You have to own that property for five years, again, not in Dartmouth. When you apply for it, yes, you have to be in Dartmouth, I think. There's income limitations. They're very low. We tried to raise those, we kind of got caught. State says, no, we can't touch that. There's asset limitations. But if you're even close, if you think you're close, or just come in, come to the office, ask. We have some flexibility in certain things, and on the income limitations, they also deduct a certain amount of your social security that doesn't count for that income limitation. So, you know, the numbers aren't always exact. What else? Oh, and the other thing, if you don't qualify for the elderly exemption, we have something called a hardship. I mean, you have to be 70 years old for that. Maybe you're 69 years old, maybe you have a problem paying your bills, something else happened, you had a catastrophe in your life. It's called a hardship exemption. We have a lot of flexibility, and we can entertain you on that if you don't qualify for the regular elderly. So just, most people come up here and they're asking for money, we're trying to give it away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion made.
Second. And Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted 7.0 to recommend.
And the Select Board, please?
4.00.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Fourteen? On the aisle here. Gentleman right, right there. Please raise your hand so she knows you.
Gilbord, just Precinct Four. Do both, if it's a married couple, do they both have to be 70?
If they both have to be 70?
Ah.
No. I don't think so. I don't know, no, they don't have to both be 70. And just on the ownership as well, too, you might only own half the property, so you'd get half the exemption if your spouse didn't own, or, you know, if you didn't own the whole property, you're still eligible for part of this.
I'm not 70 yet, but now I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Fourteen? Are we ready to vote? On the, out there, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did you have a?
I just want to add one point.
The gentleman, could you raise your hand because the people with the microphones don't necessarily know where they're going?
Roger Martin, Precinct Eight. This is my second town meeting, I'm very excited about it. My question is, I'm glad about the abatement, but I know in New Bedford, there's also an abatement for widowers and widows. There's a town looking at offering that also. I mean, I'm not a widower yet, but you know. You never know what's going to happen.
I love you all planning ahead. Mr. Nunes, do you have any insight for us there?
I don't have all that information that the, you know, this is pages long of all the different qualifications, but, you know, if you call the office, they can, they can go over all that with you, just like veterans, veteran spouses have rights, same thing in this line.
So if you think you might qualify, go to the assessor's office and they'll be best able to help someone?
Or call. If you can't reach them, call me anytime, I'm available, easy to find. One other point I just wanted to make, if it's okay?
Sure.
Where this money comes from? It's costing nobody else in the room any money. This money is in what's called an overlay account that we have, and we use it for abatements. If a hurricane comes and knocks down your house, you apply for an abatement, you only want to pay your taxes based on the land until you fix it up or rebuild. Well, we already promised the town that money, so that's covered out of the overlay account. So that's where this money comes from, where the veterans' money, you know, the additional money that we're giving, it's, again, it's here, we have it, it's not costing anybody any, you know, additional money.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. I'd entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. And a second? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Opposed? The motion, the meeting is dissolved at 8:33. Thank you very much, everyone.